And I.
Thank you, Melinda.
I wanted to apologize Jill if I spoke out of turn to the select board wanting to fill in that information.
No, I appreciate that because I could only my link was not it was saying the meeting link was expired, so I could only hear it via the YouTube channel. But helpful, I think that was good to kind of reiterate that if we want to move forward. We are looking at a big change there, so it would demand more from our town.
I also thought the distinction you made between the three different locations was really useful in my contextualized stuff.
Definitely. Yeah, you're great at that. You know this area so well. Okay, is there any public comments tonight? Okay, and then the minutes did everybody get a chance to look at?
Is it is public comment a good time to ask Melinda and Matt? Are you the ones that were at the fair, the energy fair on Friday and Saturday? Was it well attended?
Yeah, reasonably well attended.
Okay. That's what this detail for.
I think, you know. We got to talk to a few folks in Williston twenty fifty ten and, you know, I think a lot of most people there were really into looking at the cars, but definitely we're into the people, so that was good.
Thanks for doing that.
Yeah. So going to the minutes.
I have one question. I made a couple of really minor editing changes like adding another zero to seven P M at the top there.
Um.
Um, but the one significant. Thing I had, boy, can we make that a little bigger so we can read it?
Um, yeah.
Further down, I I crossed out some stuff and put a second sentence in, but I think the whole thing could come out. Basically, I misunderstood, and I thought when it's talked about street trees. Not being wanted that it was talking about on the residential streets, and it was only for Mountain View Road. And once I understood that I didn't, I wouldn't have brought it up. I understood that. We had some good discussions. I don't know if you want something in here like what I put at the end there. Um, that we had discussion, but I thought it. It was misleading to say that I had a problem with. Is that okay then?
Yeah. Any motions?
I'll move to accept the minutes as amended.
Also.
Yay Shayla Shayla.
Sorry.
Okay.
All in favor?
Hi.
Two pass. Hi.
Okay. Um. Except it looks like. Yeah, I don't think at least.
Ellie is not she?
No.
No. So then we'll move over to the global foundries, the solar projects. Looks like there's some folks here.
Yes. Um.
Looks like Sheila is raising her hand or something.
Go ahead, Sheila.
I'm sorry, Joe, I should have raised this during public comment. I just wanted to know. What the next step is for that um class one town highway was able to watch the YouTube. Do we have to bring that like what what is what would happen next?
Um, so a couple of things. Number one, the report that the presentation was about tonight will be finalized. Um, so. There's a there's a much more full featured study that 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 presentation hit the high points of that will be available for review. I would expect it. To be used as a supporting document in the writing of the town plan. Um, and I would expect the planning commission would also maybe make some recommendations. About, you know, routes two and two A and tap corners or route two in the village and the class one program as part of the. Transportation and land use chapters in the plan, so. Um. Folks might want to think about what they, you know, what they saw tonight. Um, we'll come back to them when that report is available for everybody and. How how a discussion of. Whether if or how to use that tool. In the next many years in Williston could certainly be part of of the plan. Um, and I think that's the next time the conversation would come back to the select board as well as in the form of some draft plan language.
I I was feeling as though it was planting the seed. And giving information so that it isn't a nebulous. Oh, we shouldn't do that because it doesn't cost too much, or we should.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the body language in the room. This sort of frustrating. Um. Yeah, anyway.
Yeah, just people seeming like, why would we do this? Why would we take on more work? Um, that seemed pretty loud and clear.
Yeah, that was I was just thinking if we. If we do decide we want to include it, I do not make total sense to me. As a next step, but if we do decide we want to include it, we have, I think, a little bit more work and background work. We should do it. With those um with the select board members just so that they really have that grounding because I can see from their perspective why they would feel that way. But I think we would want to. Yeah, just do some more homework with them that they felt.
Was the gentleman who was sort of speaking in the front row, is that Bruce? Is that the gentleman who would be in charge of? The roadwork?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's good for context. Okay. All right, are we ready to? Are we ready to move to the the solar projects? All right, take it away. Global Foundries.
Okay, um, good evening. My name is Jacob Clark. I'm a leader of the. Project development team with Encore Renewable Energy. Encore is the Burlington based. Solar company that Global Foundries is partnering with. Um, to to build out these proposed solar projects. Is everyone able to hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Um, at this point, I think. Uh, I've got Jeff Cram with me who's a facilities manager for Global Foundries, and we also have. Um Gina De Rossi. Who manages uh communications and 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 media um for Global Foundries as well. Um. So at this point, I believe if I'm not incorrect, uh, we've we've sort of been interacting with in in parallel with the towns. Or with the the town of Williston and the city of Essex Junction over the past handful of weeks. Um, and my. Recollection of which is which is a little bit um maybe overlapping. Um, but. I think we've presented the projects to the Williston Conservation Commission and to the Williston Energy Committee, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay, and all of those I think have been. Really uh positive and productive interactions. Um. You know, we have a slide deck um that we've put together that just sort of introduces the projects and and where we are in the process at. A fairly high level. Um. I'm just, I want to keep an eye on the time. I don't know the extent to which the members of the committee have had time to review um that. Those materials if they were included in the packet for tonight's meeting.
They weren't they what we did review materials.
The the comment memos.
Okay.
Right, but not the slides, no.
So now we just want to defer to you all. Um, do you think it should be helpful if I could just if I should if I should run through these sort of introductory slides to introduce the projects, introduce where we are in the process, or should we go directly to? Um, the two memos. That uh Shayla and Jill have prepared.
It well, so so just to um. Clarify that staff has prepared a memo which the planning commission. Um, after discussion, if you want to, if you agree that that um it's. What, you know. Whatever you want to convey is I mean, you can sign it. Um. It might be helpful, I think, for you just to run through the slides, just so that you have some idea of what he's, you know, can see what these projects look like.
I think so.
So let me share um. Whoops, let me share.
We we did have access to something that showed the maps, the. All the deep technical details.
Right, but can I just point out that Matt's Matt's email to us didn't actually have the link to the town's uh the meeting.
They should have been pasted agenda below my signature.
Yeah.
Missed it. So I'm sorry, I'm just kind of making up for lost time, but. That's okay.
All right. Well, thank you for bringing the slides up, and and thank you all for taking the time to to meet with us here this evening. The first slide is really just meant to be an introduction to Encore Renewable Energy. Encore has is a Burlington Burlington based solar developer. They've been active here in Vermont for the founded here in Burlington about fifteen years ago. And um in the in the intervening time, we've grown to a company of around thirty five, thirty six people, most of us based here in Vermont, but also. Active throughout New England and and moving into a handful of other states as well. Um, the the important part of this slide is that Encore is a values led company. We're a certified B corp, which means that we focus on the triple bottom line, as we like to say, people, planet and profit. Um, you'll notice that there's some flowers on the side on the on the margin of this page. Um. Encore's made a commitment to install a pollinator ground cover underneath the solar arrays wherever it's feasible. Um, it's not always feasible in a in a in a location like a gravel pit or an area like some of the global foundry sites which might have which might be parking lots. Or other areas, maybe like a capped landfill, which has very strict controls over the types of of land cover, ground cover which are permissible. So that's just a very quick introduction to Encore. The next slide is a is is a very quick introduction to the Williston E Chip Alley Solar. This one is. Up along um. Redmond Road uh sort of as you go plat as you go past the the two entrances to the to the global foundries campus as you're headed into the Chittenden Solid Waste uh facility. This field would be on your left. This is a uh three point two megawatt array. This is around eight thousand panels. It covers around nineteen acres of the site. Um, some of you or probably most of you have probably seen. That there are different types of racking now being installed in Vermont, and one of them that's sort of slightly more visible in the landscape to a lot of people. Are the um the dual axis trackers. They they have very tall posts, maybe fifteen to twenty feet, and they track the sun in in two directions. The the racking that's been proposed for this for both of these sites actually is is fixed tilt racking. So it it faces the south at an angle of twenty five to thirty degrees. It's around three to four feet off the ground on the low side. And then it's maybe ten to twelve feet off the ground on the high side, and the rows are oriented. They run east and west to face the sun to the to the south. Um. The project will be required to have a an agricultural style fence around it. That's for both insurance reasons and for electrical code reasons. Um, we will interconnect to existing. Uh, distribution service either along Chip Alley Road, which runs into the Global Foundries Campus, or potentially directly into a a building right there adjacent to the site. That has a transformer. As part of the building's electrical system that helps it i- interconnect to the global foundries uh distribution system. And that transformer has enough capacity to host all of the energy that would be generated uh by this by this project. There's also we'd have a transformer on site, but this is just meant to be a a very high level view. In in this um schematic here. The bright green circles are. Trees that we've identified that could potentially be either shade constraints or fall hazards. You know, once the project is built, we don't want there to be trees located close enough to the rate that they could fall down and cause damage to equipment. And so it's just something that our engineers always analyze for every project and. Yeah, those are just. Kind of potential indicators of where there might be trees based on the the surveying and reconnaissance that we've conducted so far.
And the note that we can't read says that the trees that are on the image behind the tracker, the uh panels are going to be taken down.
Uh, okay.
That little arrow at the top is saying that. These trees will be removed. It says something like that.
Yeah, it does say that.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Yep. Um. So that's the Williston E Chip Alley Solar. The next uh the next summary page is the Williston F Mountain View Solar. This project is located at the corner. Of. Uh, Mountain View Road and Redmond Road. Um, this is one point four megawatts. Um, around three thousand three hundred panels. This would cover around seven acres of that site. Again, it's fixed tilt racking, so it's, you know, ten to twelve to fifteen feet high off the ground at the high point. The rows run east to west and face to the south. And again, it's the same thing. We have an agricultural style fence surrounding the project. Um, and we're interconnecting to existing Green Mountain Power Distribution Service along Redmond Road. Which runs to the north and south here in this image. Um, and there will there'll be a transformer on site as as is necessary for every project. Um, so that's just a an introduction to, you know, from a high level to what the projects are and where they're located. And then this next slide is meant to just be a brief uh ex explanation for for why Global Foundries has. Has a plan of a very um. Sort of ambitious and important plan to build out solar on campus. Global Foundries petitioned the state Public Utility Commission for permission to operate as their own utility. In a lot of ways, this gives Global Foundries a lot more control over their. Sort of energy future and and the ways in which they procure and to some extent use energy going forward. Um, yeah, they the the Public Utility Commission did issue them permission to operate as their own utility and 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 that sort of permit is called a certificate of public good. And within that certificate of public good, Global Foundries now has a commitment to build onsite solar um and. Sort of as quickly as as is is possible from a commercial standpoint. Um, you know, all of Vermont's utilities need to comply with the state's renewable energy standard, which has requirements for how much. Energy needs to be be procured from different classes of renewable energy um. Types of facilities. And Global Foundries supports the renewable energy standard standard. They're committed to compliance with Vermont's renewable energy requirements and then. Uh, you know, as a matter of fact, they're they're excited to uh sort of. Build out their own program to be in compliance with the state's renewable energy standard. And these last three bullet points are just meant to sort of. Um. Convey what we consider to be a really um compelling narrative in that. There's a lot of sort of connected um winning. Um, elements to the to this proposal. We're we're trying to locate energy generation where it will be consumed. Like on the on an already heavily utilized and developed um. Manufacturing property or manufacturing campus. This should help to minimize the impact to the regional uh transmission system and even the distribution system as a matter of fact. And we'll also be minimizing natural resource and aesthetic impacts. So it's just a really, we think, a great model moving forward for how energy can be um. Generated and consumed for a a large user of energy like Global Foundries moving forward. Um. This next slide is just sort of meant to convey sort of where we are in the site selection process. Both Global Foundries and Encore have been working for months to identify. Um, what are the lowest impact and the most feasible sites? And we're taking into consideration a whole host of of considerations and 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 criteria. These include, you know, aesthetics, visual impacts, a whole host of natural resources issues that, you know, habitat, wetlands, waters, streams and buffers, stormwater implications, agricultural soils. Rare threatened and endangered species. Historical and archaeological resources. Interconnection feasibility is one that's really just kind of pragmatic and focused on what are the interconnection facilities that are already in 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 existence? What are the site access limitations? What are the subsurface limitations? And we also have to take into account terrain and topography and. You know, and this is to be clear, this is kind of a a condensed list, considering all of the all of the diligence that we've run on these sites. So we're. We're several months in and we're confident that these are. For the for the magnitude of energy that Global Foundries needs to generate onsite to really make a difference for their load. These are the most feasible and the lowest impact sites, and we've we've put really a lot of time and energy into um that uh analysis. Um. And then this next slide is just meant to be an introduction to where we stand in the process. Um, we've been running field studies throughout the warmer months. To cover all of these different uh sort of criteria that I was just mentioning, the natural resources, the archaeological, the geotechnical, the aesthetics. Those field studies are then converted into reports and memoranda. Which are the sort of attachments or the exhibits. They're the real um kind of. Substance into the certificate of public good filing with with the uh Public Utility Commission. That whole process is managed by the P U C, and once we've submitted our our petitions. Um, with all of the attachments, the process of actually procuring the certificate of public good from the state. Um, it could take anywhere from eight to fifteen months. It really depends on the um. The complexity from the Public Utility Commission standpoint, which issues they really need to scrutinize. What kind of bandwidth and focus they have at the state level for these projects, so. Um, we are not uh permitted to do any site work or any construction or sort of anything onsite at all until after the um after that certificate of public good has been issued. So that's sort of where we are in the process. We hope to be filing. The certificate of public good petition um. Within. The next two months or so. Um, for these two projects and in the interest of full transparency. There's and there are there are presently two projects being proposed on the Essex Junction side of things. Um, and there's these two projects on the Williston side. And together, those four projects would be somewhere on the order of eight to ten megawatts in total. And uh between Global Foundries and Encore. Will eventually be proposing a second phase of projects, which would bring us up into the twenty uh or twenty four megawatt. Um. Uh, sort of overall system capacity amongst these different arrays which are being proposed, but. For now, our intent is to focus on these two separate projects and getting them through the permit process with uh the town and the with the town of Williston, the city of Essex Junction and with the state. Um. And then the next slide is just meant to say that the um. It's meant to sort of illustrate how comprehensive the state's review is at the Public Utility Commission. Um, the agency of natural resources is a statutory party, which means they they have to participate and assess all of the criteria that are within. The jurisdiction of the agency of natural resources. The agency of agriculture is a statutory party. The Division of Historic Protection is a statutory party. Um. So uh, the the review is really. It's to say it's comprehensive might be be a bit of an understatement. There are um an an extensive list of resources or of of criteria that need to be assessed, and they cover all the same things that I was just discussing. But this is meant to illustrate that um to the extent that there are. That there is overlap between um elements of the town plan, even with the the Williston Town Plan being an enhanced energy plan under section under Act two seventy four, that's that's. Entitled to uh substantial deference. To the to the extent that there's overlap between the the sort of. Natural resource constraints or other elements being regulated by the state and by the town, the state's review is always much more rigorous. Um. This last bullet point is really the last one that I that I wanted to address, and that is to say that. Um. The one of the most important um components for the P U C to look at from the perspective of the of the town's review of the project. Is does the project comply with the town's plan? And as I just said, this Williston has an enhanced energy plan. Which is really which is really great. Um, so it one of the things that's really helpful for the Public Utility Commission is for. The town to advise the P U C whether in their view the project complies with the town planning. And in that regard. It's um. Much more focused. The P U C is much more focused on sort of the citing policies than it is on the natural resource elements. Um. And I think. That this um these two memos. That Shayla and Jill have drawn up are really focused on the citing policies, and that's extremely helpful, and. I think that's a good transition point, so I'll pause there. I know that was a bit long winded. Thank you for going through all of that with me.
Thank you, Jay.
I have questions, Joe.
Yeah, go ahead, Chip, jump in.
So you said that was the lowest impact, but you're talking about cutting down trees, putting in a uh utility access and putting a fence around this. Have you, did the other plans put panels on top of on over parking lots?
Yes.
That to me would be the least impact.
Yeah, on on the Essex Junction side, there are more plans to put in. Um, solar parking canopies than there are on the Williston side, on the Williston side, I think. Um, I mean, uh, Jeff, you can jump in if you want, but on the Williston side, there's. A little bit more um ambiguity in terms of how those buildings and how those parking lots could be used in the future. On the uh on the Essex Junction side, there's a lot more manufacturing, and there's a lot more certainty over. Which parking lots will be needed and which parking lots will not be needed. Is that fair to say, Jeff? Sorry.
Looks like you're muted.
It doesn't show a muted.
Uh. We can't hear.
Well, just again, that I would just say to me, it's just not a true statement, say this is the least impact site. When there are some rooftops and many parking areas that. Would have a less impact. They might be more expensive to develop, but they would have less impact on the environment. And and I should say that I'm in support of more solar.
Right, I mean, there's always going to be a balance between. Like between cost and environmental impact and what's possible from an interconnection standpoint. And what's possible on rooftops. Um, every rooftop project, particularly on these large flat building rooftops implicates. Um. The structural integrity of the building and of the roof and the um. The the what the warranty that's in place for the way the roof was built when it was built and rooftops. Um, can have a significant effect on a building. Solar installations on rooftops can have a lot of implications.
Yeah, is it Jake? I I don't have any objection to that. I just wanted to say I didn't like calling it the least impact. Um, place because to me it's not the least impact, but it is the more practical.
Yeah, I mean, I think so I I may have um. I I don't want to be argumentative. I may have misspoke, and I when my what I was intending to convey was that we're balancing. What's most feasible with what's also the lowest impact. There's always going to be. Um. Some some weighing of of the factors there.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yay.
All right, sorry, swapping between speakers and uh AirPods. Um, yeah, yeah, so we've we've looked at the. Rooftops in Williston and the parking lots in Williston. I think we just need a little more time on our end. To make sure that we understand what's the the most beneficial use of that. That already developed area and. Um. So that we can build out as as much solar in that in that footprint as we as we can. So I think it's a it's a phased approach. We just want to be. Um, thoughtful about how much we can put in certain areas.
Right, my next question, if I can. Oh, Shayla has her hand raised. I'll wait. I'll hold my second question.
It's cheap, and it's just a follow up on yours. The um. First one.
First one, sorry, that's closer to the actual plant. It does look like from the um. Google image that there is a parking lot there, so why wouldn't you start at least some of that space? Developing over the parking lot that's right next to the building that you're gonna be using the power for.
You know, we 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 do intend to get over to those parking lots that are more on the western side, those big open parking lots on the western side uh, of 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 the buildings. Um, right now, the um. You know, the the results of our analysis were just that this is the um. The cleanest site to move forward. There's, there's a lot that goes into parking canopies. Encore has actually built the largest um. The largest installed parking canopy in Vermont, which is at the Echo Center on the Burlington waterfront and. Um, that was an incredibly complex project for a number of reasons, but you're talking about putting up these. Um, they're they're much larger than the typical ground mount, uh, the the module, uh, the tables of modules. And here in northern Vermont, where especially in in shoulder seasons, we have a lot of windy days, they act like giant sails. And the um, the steel racking has to go high enough to accommodate sort of a lot of different types of vehicles. And in order to have the 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 structural integrity to withstand the types of weather events that we can have here in in northern New England. The steel then has to go really deep into the ground. And when you're talking about a parking lot that's already been constructed, this is that we have been working really, really. Diligently to assess this because we do want to put canopies over those parking lots. It's just going to take more time. We're gonna have to do a lot of subsurface analysis. We're gonna have to determine what um, what whether there's. Um, whether there's ledge under there, and if so, can we drill into it? Um, if there's not ledge, is the soil sufficient to withstand the loads that those panels um, and and racking will be subjected to?
I don't want to take more time with that, Jake, because I just, it was just with how you characterized it, because I do understand those challenges. And I'm hoping you can overcome them on the next project.
Yeah.
Can I just say too, thank you for explaining that, because I think it's easy to. Um, for us laypeople to um, to very quickly say, well. You know, why not do X, you know, and and not necessarily have the. The more technical details. So that was actually really helpful to hear that that um, explanation about the. The parking lot. I mean, obviously, I'm still hopeful that it will work out, but. Um, but I appreciate learning a little bit there.
Yeah, of course. I'm I'm really happy to do that. It it's it's become sort of an um. Like an interesting part of my job. I was an engineer and I worked in the construction industry. Before um, coming into solar, and I also worked for the state. As a staff attorney at the Department of Public uh, Service, which represents the state of Vermont at the Public Utility Commission. So I I've got a, I've kind of got a dual background. That makes me sort of well-suited amongst my colleagues for these types of interactions, and I really do appreciate the opportunities to to. To offer up some detail that might not otherwise be available.
And for some reason, so many other states have many more parking lot installations. And yes, they are massive poles and they are high, so you can run a plow truck under and so forth. Um, my second um, question is about fencing. Um, you, in the specifications that we were able to read, you talked about underground conduit for the electrical conduit. And my understanding may be out of date, but I thought if you ran your conduit. Your your electrical stuff in conduit and underground that you didn't need to fence. I thought the fence was for protection of the public from the electrical exposure.
No, I mean, so for some of those um, installations that there's a company where they they're down in Bristol, I think. Uh, the All Earth Renewable Company that has. Those, the racking system that's up on maybe twenty-foot posts, and they track the sun and across two axes. Um, they're high enough that. At the time, they weren't required to be fenced in. I I don't think that is still the case. I think that has changed. And we're not going to be able to build a project without a fence around it.
Okay, so the concern there, which I'm sure you've been through with the Conservation. Commission is that this is a wildlife corridor. Um, the deer wintering areas on either side of it. Um, and um, how are you allowing animals to get through a twenty-acre? Installation.
Yeah, so um. The. The towns sort of mapping the conservation areas, I've I've reviewed the town plan in 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 pretty good detail. The town's own mapping has a disclaimer that says. You know, it's for planning purposes only, it's not for regulatory interpretation. The issue with a lot of the. Resources that are available at, you know, at the town level at this, even at the state level is that. This, these, these, the mapping that we're using at this stage. Um, is based on G I S um, tools. And it's not based on, at least in my experience, it's not based on sort of. Boots on the ground surveying and reconnaissance. So there are areas, and this is very common. That that show up as mapped either wildlife corridors or deer wintering areas and. The Agency of Natural Resources requires us to do like really extensive on-the-ground um, surveying. And if there are indeed wildlife corridors that would be impacted or deer winning deer wintering areas that would be impacted. The Agency of Natural Resources would require us to mitigate for those impacts in some way. And it's not easy, but it, but we would definitely be required to impact. One thing that the Agency of Natural Resources does often require with respect to the fencing is. Um, we, over the years, Encore and the Agency of Natural Resources, there's, they've identified this variety of fencing that has. It's meant to have small openings. It's meant to be used for grazing livestock. It has small openings at the bottom, and then as. As the, as you move up towards the top of the fence, it's sort of graduating and incrementing, increasing increments. So you get towards the top of the fence, you have much larger openings, and this is an effective way of saving money for like. People who are installing hundreds of miles of fencing for grazing. And what they ask us to do is to just to use that fencing and install it upside down so that the larger openings are at the bottom. And I've seen things like uh, foxes and raccoons and coyotes inside solar arrays with that fencing installed.
Um, that's, that's a good step in the right direction. And I can tell you from firsthand experience that deer do winter to the west of there and to the east of there. And so I assume that they go between, and I'm a little bit concerned because of the larger rate behind I have. Autos, that we now would have three blockages to movement of larger. Animals, but I don't know what to do about that. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Any other questions or comments on the commission?
I was um. Can just comment that there was a comment letter saying a request not to have anything visible from Mountain View Road. I think it said from Mountain View, not from Redmond, am I right? And um, I just want to say as a practical matter. We're gonna see solar infrastructure somewhat, and that looked to me as I was face back, and I just didn't know what the. Screening is with probably um, shrubs or trees that are not too tall.
Yeah, yeah, that's a really good question. Um, so we are in the process of developing a vegetative screening plan for. For that site, particularly along Mountain View Road. Um, you know, the, the, the Public Utility Commission's aesthetic impact standard is really based on. Public viewpoints, not on private viewpoints. Um, and in that, in that context. Um, I've 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 done a little bit of homework there. The the individual who submitted the letter. Doesn't live anywhere near where you could see it from the residents on Brennan Woods Road. But concerns about visibility from public viewpoints are certainly something that will be addressed. And in terms of the screening plan, um. A vegetative screening plan is never meant to make a project invisible, that that would not be. You know, and and a a claim that could be sustained in the long term. Vegetative screening is meant to break up views of the array and to mitigate views of the array. So what's most typical with the landscape architects with whom we work is um. It's a mix of deciduous and coniferous trees and shrubs, so that there's a, there's a mix of. Texture and color and height. Um, to help break up the visibility of the array. Um, you know, it. The the trees or the vegetative screening, it 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 cannot be planted. At a mature fifteen or twenty-foot height, trees just won't live. Uh, they won't survive being transplanted at that age. So they're put in at a more modest height, and then the, we will, our plan is to provide. A what's called a photographic simulation, and the photographic simulation shows. What the project with the screening, so they take photos of the site, and then they use a computer and they layer in. What the screening should look like within five years after installation. Um, and while I'm on this subject, this is just a question that's that that typically comes up is, you know. There, in the past, here in Vermont, particularly down in like, what, New Haven and Virgens, there were some, there were some. Solar developers who put in solar, and they put in screening, and they never watered it, and they never checked on the plants, and they all died. The Public Utility Commission has since changed its rules so that there's like a biannual. Reporting where where the project owner has to certify that they've. Checked on the plantings and that they are in compliance with the plans that that were that were submitted with the certificate of public good petition.
Cool.
Good to know. Thank you.
Of course.
And my comment was mostly that I didn't think it had to be screened completely.
Yeah, I understood that. I understood. Thank you for that. It's it's a little bit, you know, uh, what, a hundred years ago, when people started building um. Grain silos in Vermont, there were a lot of people who were opposed to them, and they've since become. You know, a a a a beloved part of our landscape.
Well, you want us to talk?
Yeah, sorry.
Should we talk about the um, the the letter that Shayla wrote to Ms. Anderson? Do we want to discuss it as a commission?
Yes.
Um. Okay.
So, um. Yeah. Simon and I worked on um, sort of preparing a staff memo for these two projects. Um, ended up splitting it up into two separate memos, one for each project. So this is basically the town, the town has an opportunity to comment on these. Proposed projects before um, the applicant um, submits the filing. And the the comments really relate to how the project uh, complies with the town plan and the town. Specifically, the town plan. Uh, energy citing policies, um, which are in the town's uh, enhanced energy plan. Um, so this um. Memo in various forms was sort of uh, run by Conservation Commission, run by the Energy Committee, um. To kind of get their, you know, vetting. Um, and now it's being brought to you to see if you want, you know, to put your signature to it. Um, then submit it, um. So first off, there's a a strong statement of support in um, the third paragraph. Um, you should say the, the Energy Committee expressed strong support for these projects, um. Because it furthers the Williston Energy Plan's goal. Uh, to double the amount of renewable energy generation citing Williston. Um. And then the memo sort of goes through the the citing policies related to senior view sheds. Um, habitat, watershed protection buffers. And uh, citing uh, location. Um, some of the the policies are not applicable, such as wind, energy and historic districts. Um, and then, uh, yeah, lastly, with respect to utility lines and energy storage. Um, so mainly. Uh, the the memo. Has recommendations, uh, either requests for more information or recommendations, um. The first one being a recommendation to uh, conduct a habitat disturbance assessment. Um, on the parcel as part of the application. Um, which the app, which um, these applicants are going to be required to do uh. Anyway, for the state uh, natural resource um, agency. And then watershed protection buffers, um. Wetlands are suspected on the Chip Alley parcel. And so we're requesting the wetlands delineation be prepared. That's gonna be prepared anyway, will be required. Um, and then a fifty-foot buffer be maintained around the wetland. Um. The project location is good from the standpoint of. Uh, being in a location where there's, there's gonna be very high load from. The um, Global Foundries plant and um. The grid has adequate um, capacity. Um, this particular site, the Chip Alley site, will not be going into the grid at all. It'll be. Directly uh, going into the the Global Foundries um, campus and supplying power to it. Um. And then utility lines, uh, there was some discussion in the Energy Committee meeting about utility lines. There was a request. That um, utility lines be placed underground for this Chip Alley site. That might not really be feasible and might not um, really be uh. A very negative aesthetic impact, given that it's all on private land and the distance to the building is is very short. Um. But anyway, there's just a recommendation that we're feasible, we're reasonably feasible, the utility lines be placed underground. Um. And then energy storage, uh. Uh, Encore and Global Foundries is exploring energy storage, um, but on the Essex side, not on the Williston side. So the town is interested in learning more about um, the proposed plans to incorporate energy storage. Um, the other memo is is really pretty similar. I would say it's almost exactly the same, um. Uh, if you want, I can, you can, I can uh, show you that. Um.
Did folks get a chance to look one of these over, if not both of them? Pretty similar.
I I did, and I thought they'd already been sent.
Oh, no.
So I was.
Well, in that case, send away.
Yeah, so a again.
Uh, we haven't, I haven't been able to look at policy too fully yet.
Okay, yeah, so. Um, yes, so this project on Mountain View Road is within a primary view shed. And then the town's requesting that a visual assessment be conducted, including the application filing. Including information on how the project will adopt measures to keep the solar array from being a dominant feature of you shedding plant site. Um, so basically just um. Yeah, you know, reviewing the view shed uh, on a case-by-case basis and taking measures to preserve, to preserve.
That part seems important slash is what stands out to me, because given the trees that were singled out, it's potentially needing to come down to support the. Installation, um, like just with the footprint of the project, it's like what? What screening is, is there room for if those trees need to come down? So I'm especially curious to see. That um, visual assessment to be conducted and see that, see that information when the um, when that rest of the information is available.
Yeah, well, we'll, um, we're we're required to. Um. To send the entire certificate of public good package to the town. We'll, we'll, we will request permission to send it electronically so that we're not sending you four hundred printed pages. Um, but um, all of that will be provided.
Thank you.
And Chapin, is that the request for like the habitat assessment things that are already required? Does that feel sufficient? That's already included in our letter?
Yeah, I just wish the word went. Yeah, I just wish there were way not to have such so much fencing.
Yeah.
Uh, and while I appreciate pollinator plants underneath, I prefer grazing as a. Use for the land. And as way to keep up foreign and other things from tick growing up underneath the panels. And I didn't know. If, you know, your maintenance plan, are you going to be mowing under these periodically? Brush hogging?
With the, that's another good question. With the pollinator cover crop. Um, typically it's mowed once. Um, at the end of the summer, just to knock everything down and get those seeds down into the soil. Um, and for anything that could continue to grow, when they wouldn't be able to shade the panels in the in the subsequent year. Um, we're we're also, we Encore also has a handful of sites where we are grazing sheep. Inside the array and it's something that we plan to do more and more of. Um, it's just a matter of, um. It's a difficult commitment to make in advance until it's kind of until the project is built. And you're able to find um a a sheep farmer who wants to sort of have a long term relationship with the project and who we can. Enter into contracts with to to make sure that, you know, there's the necessary sort of longevity there. To make sure that we can just make a commitment and say, yeah, we'll have sheep here for the next five, ten, fifteen years. Um, the 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 one. In particular is is operating out of Middlebury and. Uh, his the farm, his family farm and then a few other colleagues and friends of his have started the American Solar Grazing Association. And they're grazing their sheep on a handful of our sites.
Cool. Yeah.
Great.
That's much preferable to brush hogging if you can do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's a whole host of benefits associated with sort of keeping the land in dual use. We. You know, I'd I'd like to make the case that the pollinators should constitute dual use solar with agriculture, but that's a discussion for another time. It's getting late.
Yeah.
Sheila, do you feel good about? Signing for this board then?
Yeah, I am, thank you.
Yeah. All right. Then I guess.
Sorry, Jill and Sheila, I was just maybe is this what you were about to say and I'm sorry, uh, I was just wondering if you wanted us to vote on the memos? Do you need that? Support or are you?
I would love it, yeah. Because when we get out of line and said unanimous, you know, we could say unanimous vote from the commission. That'd be great. Melinda, does that matter to you?
That's fine.
Okay, let's do a vote.
Okay, I'll I'll move to. Oh, sorry.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, I was just gonna say I'll I'll move to to approve the uh the two. Almost identical memos as reviewed.
I'll second.
Thank you. All right, let's do a vote. All in favor? Right, opposed? You're staying?
Oh.
Sorry, I can't see it.
Jill, I have to sustain because I'm a employee.
Ah, okay, that's a good recusal, okay. They're not giving you a break on your energy with a solar panel to your.
I would just say you would comply even more strongly with our energy plan if you do more over the parking lots, um. And um if you have battery storage, significant utility scale battery storage.
Um, well. That isn't, that isn't the long term plan, the battery storage, and I I also wanted to thank you all for your time. I I I always want to recognize that. That um. You're a volunteer. Um. Commission, and I know it's late at night, and these are really important discussions and they were all really. Helpful questions, so really, really appreciate that. And I think Global Foundries and and Encore are both really excited to be. Advancing these projects. We think that they're incredibly important and that then that that there's a very, very positive story to tell here.
Uh, I'd echo everything Jake just said. I appreciate your time tonight and taking the time to. To look through these and ask, ask the questions and. Want to share the projects with you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so we're moving to Williston twenty fifty. I um I clicked on the fall event schedule and I got sort of like a login. Situation that I felt overwhelmed by, so I didn't get further, but I'm hoping you'll shed some light on this.
Sure, um. Yeah, so so really quickly, um, we have, uh. Developed a a schedule of events for Williston twenty fifty, um, starting. Mid-October and going through uh mid-November. There are going to be five um in-person events at various venues around town. And uh one are actually. Looks like one. Two events that are online, one in on the Sunday. Um. So I I feel like the schedule is pretty robust, um, and uh. We are. Asking if if planning commissioners are willing. To do some promotion and and door knocking for these events, um, kind of. Uh, Emily um. Provided some information on there's a volunteer waiver form and with just some guidelines on. Basically focusing door knocking on the more walk in the more walkable neighborhoods in town. Especially areas where um there are for less represented um populations. And um. And just, you know, going out in pairs and and doing a little bit of knocking to try to. Um, just, I don't know, ask people some general questions about. What their desires are for the town and and just tell, let them know about these events.
Chomping up a bit of interest.
Yes.
You'll you'll see in the um memo we linked. To the agenda that Emily put together about this, we're also looking to do some business door knocking similar to outreach we did with that corners plan, so. Um, we'll get a sign up going for that soon. Uh, great way to do is, you know, go into a retail location or business, ask to speak to the manager, uh, and then just. Not there to complain, um. You know, but. Getting either a poster up in a publicly visible spot or in an employee break room. And emphasizing that we are interested in getting participation from people who work in Williston, even if they don't live here. Uh, to provide that perspective as well. We'll be, we'll be trying to do some of this as staff, but it obviously helps a lot if we have um folks like you out on. Your two feet as well helping. Why do you think we made these nice name tags?
And Matt, what about, what about large neighborhoods like down in Southridge and then?
So if there's an active homeowners association, we're going to try to do some outreach through the HOA, just because we can, we can get into newsletters and email lists and things like that. Doesn't mean don't go talk to your neighbors, um. But we are aware of some older, especially neighborhoods that are older, more walkable or dense neighborhoods that don't have an active HOA. So places like we have Light Acres and um some of the older neighborhoods up around Route two A, um. Where we don't otherwise have a good mechanism um to reach out to folks and um we know are sometimes. Underrepresented in in events that we do, so. We'll we'll provide some information about that as well.
Yeah, I I was the HOA president in the Southridge for ten years of my one year term and I've got lots of contacts, so I'd be happy to.
And we can, we can give out, you know, first off, you can always just link people to the website, uh, we do have individual signup clicks for. The various events because we're trying to look at um capacity of the spaces we have and. We're just planning that more people are going to want to come to these than we can even fit, right? Uh, just planning for great success.
Yeah.
The the general arc of each of these is going to be about the same, so the these are, these don't have particular subject areas. Um, we're just trying to spread them geographically around town so people can go to one that's close to home or or close to where they are, um. But people don't need to try to go to more than one. Um. And then. You know, when we actually run these events, it would be great to have some planning commission members at each one. Um, we'll be putting people at round tables, uh, and there'll definitely be a role either for staff or planning commission members to just kind of. Keep the table going on the activities that we've put together, um. For for the evening. So it'll be fun. Be good. Old fashioned, sit around the table with markers and sticky dots. Um, and eat snacks, uh, playing. And we do have some ability to help with folks who are looking for transportation and or childcare. It it may just be a stipend that we um just need somebody to tell us they needed. Some funds to get out that night or to get a ride there. We may actually have a volunteer organization that can help provide rides to these events. We'll let you know about that as soon as we know, but we are trying to make sure that um. Transportation and or childcare is not a barrier to participating in this process as well.
And we're going to serve food during the events too, like the evening events will serve dinner and. Great. And then anytime events, they serve snacks and. So we do have, um, the folks.
Um, yeah, we've got the volunteer waiver, which uh we need people to sign. You get any? Friends to help you out or sign, just got some instructions about how to go about it, and then just the uh poster and then the flyers. As well, so that people want to have a look at. Uh. Look at these and there'll be more available. Um, should you choose to sign up? Have spread the word.
Were those uh in attachments to the email you sent, Matt? I don't see them in my. Links.
No, oh, we we never poster done until. A little later, we we can send them around, we can also put prints.
Maybe a a follow up email to the commission with links and PDFs and um the way that we could sign up for stuff would be great, just to kind of. Highlight.
Um, in the email, it meant something not like a training for the door knocking, like is there any information somewhere about like? What the door knocking focuses on, what kind of come like? What kinds of conversations people can expect to have here, or we should be expecting to have the people if we sign up? I would just be behind because.
There's.
Yeah, um, we're going to get a script out, um. It's really generally. The town is rewriting its town plan in a general sense, what's the town plan? Hey, we'd really like you to come to one of these events. If you can't, there's ways to tell. Uh, the staff what you think by going to willistontwentyfifty.com. Uh, we can give you, um, in addition to the event schedules, we can give you little cards with the QR code on them to go to the website. Bumper stickers, all that good stuff too, so, um. Could I, could I make a suggestion slash offer?
Hmm.
Um. As you know, I think, you know, I do a lot of audio production and, um. What if I were to? Do like. A five to ten minute podcast where I interview. Like you and you and you, I mean, those of you that are really involved in this stuff, just saying, here's what you can expect, here's why it's important here, the things we're looking for. I'll host it, I've got a site online, I'll host it and maybe we can get, I mean, we can advertise it, maybe I can get the observer to put up. To put a link in the paper saying, hey, go get this, you want to hear this?
We can, we can, we can put it on a in a player embedded on the website too.
Oh, great.
Okay, website.
I'll I'll reach out to y'all and set up a time to get that done sooner rather than later.
Could be great, yeah.
Yeah, I think conceptualizing like if I show up here, what's going to happen, it would be really helpful for people.
Yeah.
Because it's less scary when you're just like, oh, I guess I'll join a Zoom call and see what's going on if I don't, I can leave, but so. To be able to have the info if someone's never, like I've never been um in person before.
Yeah, I think, um. Uh, soon we'll be like developing an actual program that we can put out there too.
Yeah, that's great.
Just so that. You know, this is the the timeline, the agenda, this is what's going to happen, you know, when you come in and. This is what we're going to be doing kind of thing, just so it's less scary for people.
I like that.
Great.
Would would it be helpful, I mean, you all, we already thought of this, to put something in the observer that says expect somebody to bang on your door?
We could do that, um.
So it's not like a cold column, so that people, when we, some people will know that there'd be people from our organization banging on the door.
Yeah, and we can, we can also put that out via just our, um, the email list that we do have into our front porch wall and post, that's a nice, easy. You don't have to respond, it's just know, like, you might hear from one of your neighbors about um this, they might, they might go on your door.
That's a good idea. I don't mind.
And I love the enthusiasm, I just want to be conscious of time because we're running over and, um. I think we have one other announcement about the municipality day. In Montpelier.
It, um. Uh, so yeah, municipal day, it. Uh, is Friday, October twentieth, eight thirty, three forty-five. At the National Life in Montpelier, there's a bunch of workshops all related to kind of, um. Learning about, you know, different roles in town governance and. Different functions of town and um board members have gone to this before and um if you want to go, we'll. Pay for transportation, uh, I mean, pay for mileage. And, um. What else?
Was it free?
It is. Yeah, so we'll pay for, if there's a registration fee, it might be like pretty minimal or maybe free and not insured. Um, but actually, I think. I went in twenty nineteen and it was great, yeah, like I learned a ton and. It was a very upbeat crowd with lots of different. Sessions that you could go to and pick, you know, based on your interest. Yeah, no. And the food was really good. Yeah.
And and we really like.
Five dollars.
You know, it's a, it's a pretty high impact, low dollar investment for the town to send board and committee members to trainings that are relevant to what you're doing here. We'd love to do that, so for new members.
Oh, yeah.
Whenever we think of an opportunity, we try to make it available, but if you see something and you say. Oh, I'd love to go to that, you know, uh, let me know, there are economic development conferences, there's sustainable transportation conferences, there's. I just went to a whole day last week about the state designations program, all about village centers and growth centers and downtown, so. We can, we can make that happen, so.
Yeah.
Know that that's out there.
A pretty large focus of theirs is um flood resilience, as you might imagine, um, so I'm just looking through the, um.
Yeah, the topics. Very relevant.
Yeah.
Yep.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
All right, let's do it. Until next time, friends.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
My word stole a half hour from us.